And good afternoon and welcome to our regular called County Council meeting. We're going to ask that you pause for a moment of prayer and I'll give the agenda. Most gracious and everlasting Father, Lord God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. Lord God, we thank you for life, health, strength, community, family and friendship. Lord God, we ask you, we invite you, and we invite your Holy Spirit into this meeting tonight as we attempt to do the business of your people. Father God, we thank you for all the folks that are here. We thank you for those that are watching. We ask you for your continued blessings upon all of the communities that are represented here tonight in Williamsburg County as a whole. We ask you to grant us with wisdom tonight as we go about handling the people's business. In your most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen and amen. All right. Approval of the minutes from our March 6 meeting is...
So moved. So moved is the chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wilson. Thank you. Is there any unreadiness? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so be it. Thank you. Um, I want to just take an opportunity really, really quickly if I could to recognize a couple of individuals. These two, these folks have to go back to handling some business for Williamsburg County. I wanted to introduce to the council Mr. Chris Clark of Paragon Advisory Services. Mr. Clark, if you would please, please stand. Mr. Clark is the CPA who is assisting us with our audit prep. And he comes and stays with us a couple of days a week and they are making significant progress. Beside him is, of course, is Ms. Meredith Green, our Deputy Finance Director. And I just wanted to bring them in and introduce them to the council and allow them to go back and get back to work so we can get that audit done. Thank you all. Thank you, Chris, so much for the great work that you're doing for the people of Williamsburg County. Thank you. And please pardon that interruption. I just, he had to go and I wanted to get him out early. So we have no third reading tonight. And there's going to be a one adjustment to the agenda. We will not have the second reading tonight of ordinance number 2023-05. We're going to postpone that reading until the next council meeting. So we're going to have second reading of ordinance number 2023-03, which is an ordinance authorizing the amendment of the existing agreement governing the Williamsburg Florence Industrial Park by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina and Florence County, South Carolina to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property now or to be hereafter owned and/or operated by Project Baker and authorizing other related matters. Is there a motion to accept the second reading?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Floyd and a second by Councilman Woods. Is there any unreadiness? All right. With that being said, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you all so much. We have a second reading of ordinance number 2023-04, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina and Project Baker providing for the issuance of special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto. That is a second reading. Is there a motion to accept this as second reading?
Motion for second reading.
Motion, second reading by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
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 Second by Councilwoman Hales. Is there any unreadiness? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has carried. We have a committee report from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met last week. There were three persons that came before the Finance Committee. Excuse me. The EMS director came before us concerning a franchise agreement. That agreement was referred to the county attorney, Mr. Jenkinson, for him to review it so there was no action taken. There was also an appearance by Sheriff Steven Gardner concerning a contractual agreement for an upgrade to the E911 Division's phone system to current requirements. Sheriff Steven Gardner appeared before the Finance Committee to get approval to upgrade their E911 software. Sheriff Gardner provided copies showing documentation of the funding costs, source and reimbursements total and documentation of the communication system and the service agreement. The total cost will be $91,746.30. The funding source will come from Fund 5, which is an E911 account. The state of South Carolina will reimburse the county 80% of the $91,746.30, which is a total of $73,397.04. That will be returned back to the county Fund 5 E911 account and the reimbursement will only occur once the total amount has been paid. The remaining balance and/or what will be owed for payment is a 20% match in the amount of $18,349.26, which will be paid from the Fund 5 E911 account. The action that was taken was that motion was made by Councilman Woods. It was seconded by Councilman Floyd and carried forward with a favorable request to go before full council for full council to vote on it. Is there a, well, are there any questions about this before we move forward? Sheriff Gardner and Chief Deputy Comby are here and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you all may have concerning this. All right. Is there a motion that we accept this proposal to go and enter into this contract?
So moved.
So moved by, first, first motion was made by Councilman Lee. Okay?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wilson. Is there any unreadiness? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. And there was also an appearance by the Clerk of Court, Ms. Sharon Staggers. Chairman Washington, myself, said that the committee would ultimately make decisions. Basically, she was requesting some new positions for her office and the committee agreed that we would table this since we were so close to the budget process. And so there was no action taken on that issue either. We have an issue that we need to discuss in executive session concerning finance within the county supervisor's office. I'd like to get a motion to go in executive session.
Motion to go in second to say supervisor.
Okay, motion by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wilson. Okay, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll be in executive session just for a few moments, folks. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, you're ready to sit.
All right, thank you all so much for your patience. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session? By Councilman Lee to come out of the executive session? And a second by Councilman Woods. Is there any unreadiness? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there was no action taken in executive session. It was for information purposes only. Mr. Jenkinson, I think you may have something that you wanted to share with us prior to us closing out.
I do, Mr. Supervisor, and thank you. The Williamsburg County Bar Association, in keeping with our past tradition, has assisted in, along with other lawyers in the state, the commissioning of a portrait of my brother, Judge Bubba Jenkinson, who's retired recently as the family court judge, Hand King Street. And that portrait has been painted by Bill McCullough, who recently passed away, a Williamsburg County artist of some note. That portrait to be hung in the family courtroom. It was his desire, and the bar association agreed, that we hang the family court judges in the family courtroom. So we will be removing the one family court judge, Laseen, telling his family, and putting it in there as well. So we will have, that's where it's located. To that end, we always have a nice hanging ceremony, okay? Unveiling of that portrait. I told him the other day, I said, "I'm looking forward to your hanging." He said, "My what?" I said, "We could have a nice public hanging," and he died laughing. But that's what we want to do. And it is going to be a nice event Thursday week in the courtroom. After that, there will be a nice reception in my wife's house, helping her put it on. Since it's her house, we're going to have the reception following at our house. And what I have is an invitation, and we'd like for you, and if you want to bring your spouse as well, feel free to.
Thank you. I got one, I got one, yeah. And as Mr. Jenkinson is passing those out, he and I had the pleasure of chatting earlier today, and I didn't realize until during that conversation that come this July, he would, is going to be his anniversary where he has been serving the citizens of Williamsburg County for 50 years as the county attorney. And this year will mark his 50th year, and we'll be bringing on another county attorney a little bit later on this year. And Mr. Jenkinson has agreed to stay on a board and try to give some of that wisdom that he has to the incoming county attorneys. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of county council to thank you, Mr. Jenkinson, for your excellent work, your great service to the citizens of Williamsburg County. And as I indicated in our conversation today, you're not going to get too far away from us because we're going to definitely need that wisdom. I was sharing with him a while back that he has something that you can't order or you can't buy from anywhere, and it's called institutional knowledge. And I've seen that, you know, in my experiences in the church, where you have people in the church that's been around the church for ever and a day, and they just know the inside and the outside of the church like the backs of their hands. And Mr. Jenkinson has that same knowledge as it relates to Williamsburg County government. And so again, we want to thank you. But we also want to thank your wife, your children as well, for lending you to us for those 50 years. So again, we want to take this opportunity to thank you all, and we will announce the name of the new county attorney at a later date. So at this time, that was the county supervisor's report. Is there anything from county council that you all would like to report? Any of you all? There's some folks from the Improvement, the Donnelly Improvement Group from here, from Hemingway. And we certainly want to thank you all for being with us tonight. Thank you all for driving up from Hemingway. There were some others that were here a couple of weeks ago, and when we came out of executive session, they were gone. So please share with them that I thank them for being here as well. And we thank all of you all for being here from your respected counties. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Councilman Floyd to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all, and God bless you.
Forty-seven minutes, 6:47.